Okay, welcome everybody. Thank you so much for coming to our study session today. Thank you for being patient with us. I know you're running late, but we appreciate your patience as we discussed some important things earlier. Well, today is February 27th, 2024. It is 4:46 PM. We're convened today as the Provo City School District Board of Education. We're meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we're going to begin today with a roll call. My name's Rebecca Nielsen. I am the board president. Melanie Hall, board member. Lisa Boyce, board member.
Meg Benwagney, board member.
Max Joyner, student member.
Will Widener, student member.
Gina Hales, board member.
Karen Tate, board member.
Devin Daly and Stormy Dicks, administrator.
Wendy Dow, superintendent.
All right, thank you so much. And thank you to everyone who's joining us in person and online. We're just so happy to have anyone here with us, so this is great. And is there? What? I'm not saying our meetings are boring, but I appreciate anyone who's willing to give time. This is really great. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Is there a motion to convene our study session today?
I'd love that we convene our study session today.
Thank you so much. Motion made by board member Hales, is there a second? Second by board member Hall. We are now in study session. All right, perfect. We're gonna go ahead and start today with the board handbook training given by Vice President Jennifer Partridge.
Okay. So for today, we are talking about page five, responsibilities. You can see it attached there as well. You can follow along. And for the sake of time, I'm not gonna go through all of these books here. But I do wanna point out a couple of them. So the first one is one of our responsibilities is to keep confidential all issues discussed in executive sessions, including legal action, negotiations, personnel, real estate, and school security details. So just wanna remind all of us how important that really is. There's a reason why we talk about things in an executive session. And we just have to be very careful to not say anything about it, not indicate anything. And when in doubt, did we talk about that in a curricative or a different meeting? Then err on the side of maybe it was executive that we discussed that, so I better not say anything. And I think for the public, just for you to understand that there are certain things that we can't talk about. And so even if we really want to, we sometimes just have to say, I'm sorry, I can't tell you anymore about that. But that doesn't mean that with whatever you've asked out, that we're not working on things. And then the third to last bullet point, understand the distinctions between board and staff roles and refrain from performing management functions by a responsibility of the superintendent, business administrator, and staff. So just a reminder that we function as a body to direct the work of the district, but individually, we do not do that ourselves. I guess that's the next point as well. And that we should not be doing their roles or telling them how to do their roles. And we do appreciate all the work that our staff and our administration staff do. And we just remember what our lane is.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Good reminder, we appreciate it. We'll go ahead now and have a construction update. And I'm not quite sure who's gonna take that. Feathers, more. Chat, thanks.
Westling.
Westling, come on up. And if you guys don't mind, we'll have you stand up at the front for YouTube purposes so everyone can see you.
You'll be famous by the end.
Do you need to hook your laptop?
Yes, possible, at a degree.
Is it a Mac or no?
It's not.
Oh, my gosh.
Actually, we have a thumb drive.
I have a thumb drive.
Probably have something here.
It's got it on the thumb drive.
I do. Hi, Mike.
Are you on Windows?
Elevator.
Press Windows and K. You should hope to see the device in the 41. Looks like that. And code number is 7187.
There it is.
Okay, so we'll start. Well, first off, I'm Mark Peterson. I'm our director over our K-12 and public projects for Westling Construction. So it's my fault. Whatever it is, it's only my fault. Trent Huntsman is our project manager over Shoreline. And Tom Preston is our project manager over Tempe U right now. So Tom and Trent have put together just a quick slideshow to kinda update you on progress and where we're at with things. And then you guys can ask us any questions you want after they go through this.
Go click away. Or go immediate click. Yeah, let's click. Okay, whoa, that skipped a couple of slides, I think. That's okay? And it's cutting off the edges, but that's all right. This is the band and choir room. This is yesterday, so people understand. That's kind of the status of the project. The ceilings are going in. Other areas, the ceilings are in. And cabinetry's finishing up. Carpets have already begun in multiple rooms. So we're working our way through that. Let's see what this does. This is our current progress schedule. Blue line is our data date, so it was updated on the 20th. Green lines represent nonessential activities, but everything's gotta be done, of course. Red is the critical path. And then blue are activities within the last month that have transpired. So area G, that happens to be the auditorium, lots of work going on in there, so.
This is just for the next four weeks? Is that what that says?
Yeah, it's a blower for the four weeks. The thing that you want to know is in the next one. You can skip out all the other stuff and look at the substantial completion date. So we're on target to give you the building June 17th right now occupancy. You can have it and do what you need to do. So that's kind of where we are schedule-wise right now.
Yeah, also with that, with furniture, stuff like that, if you have that coming sooner.
They have that coming in July.
Yeah, in the past, the state fire marshal has allowed us to bring all that in and get it set up and everything before occupancy. So if there is by chance you have that coming in sooner, that is a possibility.
Well, we'll be in a position where we'll be granted an occupancy, where you can push furniture in really, maybe even in May. So. This is backside. We're shooting to the northeast here. Of note, the last little bit, big features, we've put in the basketball courts. They are done, but they don't have the standards on yet and the painting, just because of weather, that kind of thing. Windows are going in. This set of big windows will complete the whole backside of the building. All windows are in, were completely closed, that kind of thing. The next one is a video, and I don't know how that's gonna play. If you just.
There you go.
Well, it skipped video. I tried to get out. We lost everything. We lost the TV, Mark.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So to continue on, great things are happening in the school. In the classroom wings, which you haven't seen, the ceiling tile is in, the walls are painted, cabinetry is installing. Looks like Mark's got it up and running again. This will be an exterior video, but it's on the wrong slide. I'm gonna move it forward, Mark, if that's all right. So that's our video. Okay. And it's playing from the front of the slide, which I don't get. Okay, there we go. So outside, the north side, which you're seeing first, is the place we're doing last. So we're kind of working our way around the building towards the front entrance. So the glass right here is missing. But that'll come in in the next month or so, and then we'll slap the doors closed and complete the building. So all the structural masonry is complete, all your structural steel is complete. You're seeing those kind of things. We have people coming next week, and they will resume the exterior activities. So you'll start to see landscapers show up, that kind of thing. So here at the end of the video, you'll see we've been milling soil now for about a month on the site and getting it prepared for amendments, and then we can put all the planning material in. So that's been going on through the winter. These back windows are a big deal. That'll close in the whole backside, like I just mentioned. And so the black areas, these areas will receive metal facade. That is just the waterproofing air barrier that's on it now. So that's kind of what you're seeing. And the drone's gonna turn and fly right through the middle of the building and go to the top here in a second. This is one of the big, we call them a curtain wall, which is the glass. That curtain wall is now finished, it just needs its pressure cap outside. And let's just fly over the top there.
That curtain wall, does that mean it opens?
No, they're just a door at the bottom. But it's a wall, a curtain wall. The soil, this is the soil I'm talking about, the amendment. All the good, clean topsoil now is there, as we're milling through the pile that was made a couple of years ago. Upcoming targets, let's see. Upcoming targets, the elevator's installing this week and next, we have that. We talked about the outside. The wood floor arrives next week on the outside. We'll have doors in right around April 1st. If you hit Control and click on that, I can take you, I don't wanna take too much time, but let's go into a classroom. Why don't we select the second one? Hit Control and then select that, and that should drop you all the way into our 3D photograph. Oh, if you're connected to the internet. Well, okay. If you're not connected to the internet, that won't work. So that's kind of the status of Shoreline. I guess we'll save questions to the end, but Shoreline's doing really well. It's gonna turn older on time, it's not gonna change.
So I drove by it the other day, and I noticed there's no front door. When are the doors expected to be on?
That's what I was referring to in April. So we'll put all the glass in, all those curtain walls go in first. And the last thing we'll put on in that system are the doors. They're the very last piece we'll put in.
We do that so they don't get damaged.
Yeah, we intentionally do that.
Because those take so much abuse.
And all the stuff has to go in, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So to us, a door is a whole wall out, and that's beautiful for us to get things in. Tom, sweet.
I had another question enough Shoreline. So have the construction trucks been notified they have to use Lakeview Parkway and not Center Street?
Multiple times, and I released another email today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that, and so does the neighbors, who annoy me with it.
Okay, so Tempe U, where we're at right now, let's see. First off, we'll go over the admin. We had that flood earlier in the month. We've gone in, and we've replaced all of the ceiling tiles that are damaged. There's still some five-foot ones that were ordered, and they should be here this week, and then we'll drop those in. All the lights, we've gone through electrical, cleaned it, made it so that it's ready. It's just, I guess, whenever the school wants to reoccupy, they can. I know that there's some demo that's close by, and the noise, they might wait a week just because that noise, once they're done demoing, then they can move in and occupy it.
Yeah, we've also kind of gone through, and there's some areas where the chairs have damaged the walls and stuff like that, so we've patched those. And having that repainted, just so it looks fresh when they do move back in, it's a cleaner environment for them to work in.
Yeah.
We haven't had any new, then?
No.
No, so the tough part about what occurred there is we had cut the roof literally 70 feet away. And they did not anticipate any water even getting there. We're still trying to figure out how it even got that far. So once we made that physical separation through the roof, we're able to drape down plastic and the roofing membrane to where it has a better watertightness to us. We've been through multiple storms and haven't had any issues so far. They don't anticipate anymore.
Okay, so overall site progress, this just kind of shows you an aerial view. This is going to be the softball field. This is the demolition going on. The new classroom wing that was complete over there, bleacher building, and then concession. So we'll kind of dive in a little bit more. So the old academic wing, the demolition, we're planning it should be complete and all hauled off mid-April.
And one thing to keep in mind with the demolition, so the building goes down really fast, but to pull everything out of the ground is what takes a lot of time, because that's a lot of weight to haul off. So well, we'll have basically the building down on the ground in the next couple of weeks. It still takes some time to get everything pulled out.
There's all the concrete, all the mechanical tunnels that are coming out. So there's a lot of under, kind of all that.
Unseen stuff that's gotta be hauled off.
So here's some pictures of kind of the demo. This is the old dance floors, ballroom right in here, and then the gym is right here that they'll start tearing into here in the next couple of days. So that's kind of the demo progress. Then Phase B will be us building the new gym, the dance floors, wrestling, and a couple of classrooms. And that slated to be done February of 2025, so about just under a year. It's Valentine's Day. Okay, bleacher building, that's complete by July. So here's some pictures, or a picture of the bleachers. They're starting to kind of do a lot more of the seating portion of it, and that'll continue on inside of the bleacher building. Or you've got the team rooms and a couple of restrooms. They're starting to hang drywall, and all of your rough electrical is kind of done in there.
One thing to note here, so we've gone through and protected that room.
Yeah.
Because there's quite a bit of work that goes on above that with the bleachers. So just to protect that, and so it's still a new roof when we get done, they've got the protection put on that.
One thing is, is the press box will be coming at the end of April that will then just be lifted up, and it just sits right on top of all of your bleachers. Concession building, so right now, they're just working on the soffit on the exterior. Inside, same thing, rough plumbing is going on, so they're slated to be done with that one in July, and that'll have all your courtyard up front, too, all the concrete and everything around it, so.
Ready for football season.
Yep. And then the pavilion on the south end, that one, they've started the earthwork, and they're getting the footings poured here the next week or so. And then the building will start coming up from there, so.
When do you expect that one to be completed?
July.
Yeah, that'll be July, with the rest of that site and package.
Okay, so overall site progress, the parking parrot drop-off is December of '24. We'll have all of that tied together. And a lot of these, between the softball and the parking, the reason why we can't finish them sooner is because that kind of is your access for the build of the new. And so you're kind of limited to tearing up and doing things like that. And the softball field is our lay-down yard, where we keep all of our supplies and everything for this new phase. So that'll be towards the end as well, finish that out.
Is paving difficult in December?
It'll pave before that.
Paving will be done before. You might have some, like, site work or concrete and things like that.
We anticipate paving about October. So before we lose the temperatures, but be able to still get it done.
Where in all of this timeline is the process for the commons over by the new moon stair?
The commons is right here, whoops, sorry, right in here. And you can't turn it over until the air handler for the gym is up and running, because all of the air that is feeding the commons is tied to that. And so your fire marshal won't allow occupancy in there without.
Does that all the way till February of '25, or is it gonna get sooner than that?
It should be sooner.
Oh, it should be sooner.
Because we have to have the air handler on for that acclimation of the wood floor. And so as soon as we can get the roof on, the new, and then get the air handlers fired up, I think.
Yeah. The biggest thing, we walked the state fire marshal through there and says, okay, we wanna turn over the learning stair, it's ready to go. What are your thoughts? How is this all gonna work? And without the airflow and that system up and going, he was really concerned about the kids in that area. So as we work through and get things sealed off on the other side of the commons, we'll continue to work with him on being able to get access to that area. Truthfully, I think one of his biggest concerns was demolition in that area.
Just the proximity of how close it is.
So we really don't know if it'd be a few months or only a couple of months before that's done?
That's what, we'll bring him back through when we're done with demo and see what he's. And we've got a really good working relationship with him. He's very upfront and honest with us in what we can and can't do with him.
We'll see if this one, how do you play? This is our video kind of. I don't have any cool music like Trent did. This just shows you, so the concession building, the bleachers, and then kind of working towards where demolition is occurring. This used to be kind of the footprint of the old school. So you can see how much they've taken out. They're sitting right where the media center used to be. And then stepping up, this was your old locker rooms right in here, the practice gym. So you can see just how close we are. This is the commons and the learning stair right there. And then this is your new business wing that's right there. Okay. Okay. So.
So one thing that we've had, and this is just for you guys to consider, as our team has looked through for future, we know you guys are looking to do the future phases. And the phase we're in right now, as Tom and our team have gone through, they're looking ahead to say, okay, if we need to tie in a building to that, this is something we need to consider. And just, it's for you guys to discuss. We can get you more information or work with VCBO to get that information, but maybe walk us through that.
Part of that is, so it's turned, but if you look here, this is kind of the overlay. But so this is your new gym that's going in. But these are some mechanical tunnels that are throughout it. And if you want to put any expansion towards that new parking, like over this way, you don't have any routing for mechanical.
Piping, so that's your heating, your air conditioning, access to electrical, your culinary water. Everything comes through those tunnels.
They're all kind of situated in the heartbeat of the building is below the cafeteria and then go through the tunnels. And so the recommendation would be to extend those tunnels to your exterior wall of the new building right in here. That way, if you do have any future expansion that you need, you have that ability that you're not tearing up new dance floors or concrete or whatever it might be to get in and do that later on. And that could be 20 years down the road or whatever it might be, but it gives you the ability for some future expansion there.
And we've talked to VCBO about this as well. We work with these guys in a lot of different areas, but, and we'll continue to work with Dave just so he can give you guys some options on that. But this is something that we saw coming up and says, okay, if you guys plan to do something in the future, let's not make it first for when you decide to do that. And if you spend the dollars now, you won't have to be railroaded in the future, so.
When do you have to know in order to get that done?
What's that?
What's the deadline to know?
If we can have that decision made, probably.
I would say a year.
If.
The whole building.
Yeah. About a month is when we're gonna start going into the construction phase of this last, this phase of building.
So no pressure?
No, no pressure. So any questions on Tempe U? Yeah.
What was the cost of that, just like a general cost?
That's what we've got, that's what we've gotta look at. I mean, we just barely caught this, what, Thursday?
Right.
So we'll get some stuff put together, and I'll work with Darrell and get, we can work through that. And probably get you some really good numbers, working with VCBO on a design and working through that, so. Yeah, we can get that probably this week, so you guys can start mulling that over. Anything else?
Tricky, because we're looking at, you know, talking about next, like what next for the sites of type, you know?
Right. Well, and also, I mean, just communications key to us. I mean, we appreciate you guys having us in to kind of go over this, and we'd love to continue to do this for the future. If you guys have any questions, you are welcome to reach out. My phone's always on.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
With softball field where you have all of your staging right now.
Yep.
If we redo the softball field, which is something that we need to do, and we decide to build in that parking lot, is that gonna be a problem? Or are we gonna need to keep that as a staging field?
Is, you're saying for the next, if you decided in the next phase, build some expansion down here?
In that area?
Or here?
Oh, lovely, that's a great question.
See what I'm asking? Because I don't wanna put a million dollars into a couple million dollars into the softball field, and we don't have a staging.
So the good question on that is, is you have time, because that's gonna be the last. The softball field will be the last, too.
But not if we decide to, I mean, we've been pushing the softball field up another few more years, please.
Yeah.
So I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah.
All right, I have a more general Tempe U question. Are we ready for those?
Yeah, yeah, whatever.
Okay. Okay, so we've had a lot of delays and concerns with the part of the project that's now been completed.
Yeah.
What is happening to make sure that we can stay on track for the Phase B with the gym and the dance?
So yes, we've had some major hits on that area. And we recognize that. We've made some changes on our end to remedy that with personnel. But at the same time, you have elevators that are so unpredictable. Luck of five leprechauns, we have shorelines, to be honest with you. We're through the bulk of the long lead stuff, truthfully. We have the trusses that can be a long lead item. Masonry, with what we went through, through the majority of this phase, there was a massive shortage in masonry. We were facing that on Shoreline. With what we have right now, you have a full block plant that's opened up at Point of the Mountain with Sunrock. So we don't have that major shortage in block right now, so we're not worried about that. These are easy, I mean, we're to some of the easier stuff to build. Air handlers have been a major, major problem right now. We've had delays across every school that we're building.
They're sitting right here.
The air handlers are sitting on the ground right there.
And all your trusses are back right here on the road line, so a lot of your long lead items.
All the long lead items are here. The wood floor is, will be in a warehouse shortly, if it isn't there right now. We're there, we've got this stuff.
Is the other elevator here?
Not yet, but it has been ordered.
It has been ordered, and we are tracking that weekly. The other tough part with the elevator is it's with a company that we don't do as much work with. The other tough part with the elevator is it's with a company that we don't do as much work with. So we didn't have teeth to bite them. Some of the other ones, I think we had.
I had Otis.
You had Otis, yeah. So with the elevator, we're hoping, we're keeping our fingers crossed.
Is that because that too makes the elevator you have to have?
No, there's three major suppliers.
Like if one supplier is easier, could we?
Yeah, that's, we can give our recommendations on that, but I'm not gonna do it on YouTube. So, yeah, we have the long lead stuff here. I don't foresee any major delay. We had a major concrete shortage through here. Our subcontractor was limited to four hundred yards a week over.
For the company?
For the company, and we have, we have four high schools with them going, multiple other school projects, so we hit some major, just unforeseen weird stuff through this phase of it, which we have other projects that we're still overcoming that. That timeframe, we're building Cypress High School up in Magna, and we're still overcoming those delays from winter and concrete. So this just happened to land when we had a deadline to hit. The other ones, we had a little bit of time to recover. Any other questions?
I just have a question about that. I feel bad that Timpew hasn't had a home football game in over two years, and I just wanna make sure that I don't have to stand in front of Timpew and tell them they don't get to have home football games.
July, you'll have all of this open concession and everything.
I'll tell you what, if that happens, hold on in front of them.
I'm so thankful, thank you.
It's been really hard.
Yeah. No, so we've been pushing pretty hard on that as far as the concession and the bleacher building because we know, I mean, winning state and everything, you wanna come back and
Stay on your home field.
Stay on your home field, so.
Yep.
And because the northeast section is open and.
All the parking and everything.
Fire marshal can also have that.
Yep, we'll have, we'll have what you need to hold your games here.
Can I finish with a frank slash hard question for you?
Absolutely.
We have a long history with Westland, we're appreciative of everything you guys have done for us, that we have a good history, and this is not, this question is not indicative of how I feel about Westland, but it is a question I feel like we have to ask on behalf of the public. I feel like we just need to be a little more open about this, I guess, but we are, we received a presentation last week about certain areas of the school that are just looking awful that, you know, we're gonna need to do some construction in the near future.
Yeah.
What can you, how can you help assure me that if we continue with Westland on this, on these parts that we haven't even, that we're just barely discussing? How can we better manage the project so we're not running into so many delays? Right, and I recognize there's a lot of things that are out of your control, I fully recognize that. And it's a build onsite, which is a whole different beast than a clean site. I recognize there's a lot of things at play. But I just, there's been so much, I don't know what the right word is, so much, so many hard things that have come with this rebuild, and the public has just really been patient, but also very frustrated with a lot of things that happen.
And our teachers.
Teachers, everyone, so I just, I would like to be reassured somehow to know that if we continue and we go with this, all these other parts of the building that we haven't even, you know, that weren't even part of this project. Wesland, how can you reassure me that this is gonna be smoother than what we've done so far?
Here's what I do. We need to have direct communication. Which means, these three guys standing right here are who you need to talk to. If you have questions on stuff, if you hear about the way, or if you hear of something, and we haven't already talked to you about it, you need to talk to us. We're your guys. That's what you hired us for. And the buck stops right here, truthfully. And that's, you guys have my number. If you have questions, I need to know about it. Tom needs to know about shoreline questions. Tom needs to know about Timpew questions. We talk daily about our progress, what we're seeing with subcontractors, what we're seeing with supply chain. And I feel bad because I don't feel like that communication has happened for a little bit here. You know, and Daryl and I are talking quite a bit more, and with the turnover with our team and the turnover with your team, I feel like it's been lost in the mix there. So we wanna continue our relationship with Provo School District. We've done a lot of great projects together. We wanna continue that. But we understand, if you guys have reservations, you guys can have reservations. If you feel like you need to bid it out and go with someone else, we understand. We truly do. But we'd like, we'd like a shot at doing it. But we'd also like to know what your frustrations and your concerns are.
Absolutely. I mean, if there's anything on our side we can do too to help it out, obviously we're in, like we're, things that we could have done differently, we're happy to improve on that as well. We just, I just know from the public's viewpoint, they're probably getting nervous here. More parts of the building may soon be, you know, may soon have some more, you know, remodels, construction, whatever. And so I just wanna put that out there, maybe in the open, we're, we're, I'm not, I'm not making any, I'm not saying we're cutting any, we're not doing any, I'm just saying in the future, you know, we just need to be reassured, I think, so.
Yeah. And I think the communication is key to that. I mean, if you do decide to go on, I think understanding what it's gonna take to build that and putting out a plan, a written plan, a graphic plan. People don't like that schedule Trent showed you? I've got subcontractors can't even read those, to be honest with you. So we've switched to a graphic schedule.
The picture back, or wherever it is, right here.
It doesn't matter what language you speak, you can understand colors and you can understand dates, right?
Yeah.
That's, that's how, that's how we've improved our communication and other, with all of our other clients as well.
Yeah, I guess my question is for you as well as for us, which is, we're talking about communication, so I just wanna make sure, are we clear? Are you clear and are we clear? How the communication goes, who you talk to directly? Do you have five different people you're trying to communicate with, or do you like, you know exactly? Who is your person? And you know what I mean? And as communication is coming to you and as you're giving communication out, are we clear on those lines of communication?
Daryl, are we clear?
Clear.
And so it would go, for example, from Westland to Daryl and from you to superintendent.
Superintendent.
And Cut.
Yep.
Okay. And as, I know in this case, we have a principal onsite, in our other case, we don't have a principal onsite, so as we communicate with principals, again, like if that, everybody's clear, if they have a question, exactly who they go to.
If he was onsite just a week or two ago.
Great.
Walking through shoreline.
Yeah.
But the communication team that I have is really good.
Great. I'm not challenging you, I don't know anything about us. Like, can we do better for you? Like, how can we support you?
I'm referring to the district's personnel that I'm working with.
Okay.
I'm gonna, we're doing really well.
So if we have a conversation with Mo, Mo, up there, we're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we're relaying what we told her to Daryl. So that everyone's in the same boat. That's, that's, that's the communication that we, Daryl and I have discussed, I mean, we sat down, was it two weeks ago? And established that, that's how this has to happen. This is the only way. I go to a lot of board meetings, and I'm happy to come here, every board meeting, and give you guys an update if you want.
Yeah.
We're, that's what, that's what we're here for, guys. And we can have, you can ask whatever questions you need. If you have questions in between, shoot us an email, text, whatever, and we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
So.
I have one more question. I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Trent.
I don't know if this question's for Trent or for Wendy. When can the shoreline teachers have a tour of their classrooms? So they can know when, when's the soonest they can tour their classrooms?
If they get their hall pass. It, I'm, it doesn't matter to me, come whenever you want. Can I give some counsel with that? This is, shoreline's like my thirty-second school I built, so please understand, it has been my experience that when you're bringing the entire staff through a building before it's done, I end up with a laundry list that long of brand new things that each teacher just has to have in their classroom. And school districts try to build to a standard, and they try to maintain that standard. So things are equal, and you're not having to learn to every person's little idiosyncrasy. So you're welcome anytime, but it can hurt projects when people walk through a building that is right on the cusp of finishing, and they wanna change the rest of it. And I have toilet partitions that are eight months out, and then all of a sudden, the building is open without toilet partitions, and I look like a dummy.
With that being said, if you do wanna bring the teachers through, I'd recommend a Friday afternoon.
Yes.
The sites are a little bit quieter. A lot of our guys work four tens or four tens and an eight. So if you do want to bring some of the staff through, I'd recommend a Friday, early afternoon.
Do you have a recommended time that would make more sense? Maybe when it's mostly complete already, or?
Come anytime.
John has a date already set up with the.
Yeah, he asked about a weekend advance or so.
Yeah, there's a date set up.
And then they came through, but I, he just brought immediate administrative staff.
Yeah.
If we wanna bring, you know, the entire staff of the school, Friday afternoon's best, you know, two-ish. But I don't know that the teachers can do that, at two o'clock in the afternoon. But if you wanted to come later, okay, fine, I can be there.
What's your teacher group, May?
Make it up, make it up.
Okay. That's the time?
I think to your question, like, maybe we do it in May?
Once it's a little bit more complete.
June?
I'd probably say, you could, you could do May.
Okay, May.
Yep. The other thing, it generates a lot of excitement with the staff, and it's just, they get excited about it, and it's really a good thing.
Look only, look only. There's a look-only date, Terry. They can come in and look only. They don't, they don't get to create a list.
No touching.
Yeah.
No post-it notes.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate it.
We're happy to be here.
All right, let's move on. Item S, an RDA update from Devon Davis.
Hey.
If you have like the two-minute version.
Well, Keith and Chris are here from the city.
Awesome.
They're here to answer questions that the finance committee have about the area that can front up them for the Norda.
All right. So.
It's nice to be with you.
Thank you so much for speaking.
You bet.
All right, so do we start with our questions?
Sure.
Okay.
I think that's why we're here, I mean, I don't think we have a specific ask, I think you were here to.
I asked them to come to answer the questions that the finance committee has.
Okay, so finance committee members, are you? I gotta remember. While we're waiting, can you just give a quick overview of exactly what we're talking about here?
For those who weren't on the finance committee.
So, generally speaking, you're all familiar with the Norda project on the kind of south end of Provo by the golf course, around the golf course. I think the primary issue that we're talking about, at least from my understanding, when that project was originally designed, and I wasn't here at Provo City then, so I don't know exactly the logic, but I think some of the thinking was that a redevelopment project area would be based kind of around the housing component alone, and not necessarily some of the commercial component, especially the building that was first going to be constructed and just recently got completed. If I had been here at the time, I think I would have advised differently. But what we found is that as that project has progressed, and all of you are aware, and you've experienced this with some of your schools, the construction market is just really volatile right now. And we're finding more and more developers that have projects in properties around the state and around the country have put those projects on hold because they just can't guarantee, if they were to enter into agreements with contractors, that the pricing that they agree on is going to be what the pricing actually is when the project gets built. So a lot of, a lot of developers are just saying, we're just gonna wait. So that's what we're experiencing with the housing component for the Norda project. What we have done is we've worked through amending the redevelopment project area, and that's part of what we've been discussing with you and with the county, to augment that a little bit, because it gives us some flexibility to put some requirements on the developer that the original agreement didn't anticipate, that would require kind of benchmarks to get the residential and the parking structures, and some of those things started sooner. And if they don't, that the tax increment wouldn't be returned back to them. So in that instance, the city, the county, the school district would keep their portion because they were unable to perform. One of the key issues, though, is because the market has lagged, they want to fold in the existing building. And that's, that's different, and I totally understand that that's different for us to anticipate, and that's different for you to anticipate. But one of the things that it does is instead of anticipating a future revenue stream that may or may not ever happen, and is really, really difficult to finance, because you can't guarantee what the market is going to look like, they can go to their financial institutions right now and say, we have a building, we know what the property values are, we know what it will generate, we'd like to bond against that or finance against that, so that we can start this development, the next phase, right now. And so I guess from my perspective, the impacts to the school district are the same as far as housing and whether or not they're gonna have students. The only difference is, you could say to me, and I think it would be a fair comment, but you're asking us to give away potential property tax that we thought we might be collecting because of that building, and I totally agree, I understand. The risk for all of us is the but-for argument, right? The risk that if we aren't willing to invest, the developers may not be able to finance the next phases, and so all of what we had hoped could potentially be developed, that could return value to you and to us and to everybody else, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't, I just don't know. Now, in the past, I think all of us might have said, do I wanna gamble or not? Well, there's so much happening in Utah, I'm going to rely on the fact that it's probably going to happen anyway. And we might have gambled, and we might have been right, right? It might have happened anyway. I just don't know that I can say that anymore. And that's really strange, I mean, I've been doing this in Utah for thirty, for more than thirty years. Brandon Bugle, who's the premier kind of commercial broker for Colliers International, and the chairman of Colliers, I've never heard him talk like he's talking right now. I mean, he says the office environment right now is apocalyptic. We're dealing with incredible residential shortfalls. In our analysis of how to solve that problem, we've been talking to builders who've told us, well, just basic construction on residential development is three hundred bucks a square foot. So if you build a thousand-square-foot home, it's a three hundred thousand dollar home. That's without granite countertops, that's without any nicer finishes, that's not without, that's not including property, property costs, the property, the value of the property. So all these affordability issues and increased interest rates and construction costs are just making the market so volatile that we're finding developers risk adverse to moving forward. So I guess we're just coming back to you to determine, are we still on the same page? That we think that long-term value of what we're going to get through this partnership benefits all of us enough that it's worth us, I don't know, putting an extra card on the table to make sure that it happens? Or do you wanna take what you've got right now and say, that's good, we don't want anymore, and we're just gonna, we're gonna hold steady? Because we can all do that. My, my argument is, Provo City saw a decline in sales tax for the month of December, fourteen percent. I mean, it's been a long time since we've seen that kind of decline in sales tax. That's with rising inflation and the cost of goods being more than they've been for a long, long time, right? That means people are still so, being so careful, even with rising costs, that we're spending that much less. So we're all trying to figure out, so how do we mitigate that? How do we manage police, fire, taking care of roads, streets, infrastructure, all those things, if that's the state of the world that we live in? Well, if that's the case, the only solution is for us to try to partner again, together, to help good projects like this to continue to happen. Because otherwise, all of this begins to stall, and then we're all gonna have issues with how do we manage ongoing operation and maintenance of our facilities with declining sales tax and property values and no new development, which is really risky. And so I guess my plea would be that we hold steady, and we continue to move forward with what I think will be an incredible project and has the potential to bring the kinds of jobs to Provo in the surrounding, in the school district that we need. We're going to be training doctors at a medical school that will rival what's at the University of Utah. We'll have more potential students here than they'll have there. Those potential students will be interning at our hospitals and our facilities, and they'll be living here. And all, and they're, so the property values of where those potential doctors will live will begin to elevate. Those people will be. Those people will be spending their disposable income in our community and that just continues to raise this environment in a way that I think benefits all of us. So that's, that's kind of why I think we're discussing this and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. But I hope that's not too much, but that's just my, my take on where we are.
So my biggest concern is bringing in a building that's already on.
I understand.
So I guess based on what we had Joseph Larson do for us, I don't see the price difference between, because it's now wrapped in, what we're, what we were given, what do you call this? Yeah.
And I, and I think we had asked for a copy of what your CPA provided and we were told that we couldn't receive it and we didn't want to go through a grandma request to get it. So if there's information in there that would help us understand what your concerns are, it would be nice to be able to see that.
I guess, I guess my question is like, what would the price difference be? So I know what it is, including the building, re-upping that building. What is it with out the building and just the existing one? Does that make sense?
Right. So what's the, if we don't roll the building in?
And I don't know that I know that number off the top of my head. Do you, Chris?
Yeah, so the.
This is Chris Butte. He took David Walters' place.
I had a lot of interviews with Joey.
Chris has been working in Midvale City for about 20 years or whatever, so we're happy to have him. But he's been trying to catch up with, with me on where we are on all this.
In a roundabout way, the county, we have the, as Keith has notified and expressed to you guys today, we have the benefit of having a lot of this stuff captured by the Utah County Assessor back in November when he assessed the property. So the value of that building is surplus of 22 million. So that'd be 22 million of additional income into that equation for that ask of a reimbursement or interlocal agreement between the district and the Provo agency. And all the tax entities will receive more money as a benefit of that. And that's what we see as bridging that gap and as Keith has indicated, moving to the next phase. It's all part of that overall campus environment. And I think we've set that stuff over in previous presentations. I have some copies if you guys want to see what the campus at any goal is supposedly looking like. So we're talking about this building right here is the building that we're bringing into the fold. That's residential stuff, but I made copies. I, I don't know if I made enough copies. Here's a, here's a, here's a, these are both the same. That's a bird's eye view and that's a segment. So it just helps describe kind of what we're working on. That's the school. These are the residential and that's part of the whole campus. There's the golf course, freeway.
And we're maybe not as prepared as we could be. I wasn't really sure, but your questions were, we probably could have and should have made more copies. I apologize.
Yeah, I was guessing. Okay, and I can send all, all four of them to you again. If that makes it easier.
So the biotech building is the one that's.
Oh, I don't need that.
Correct.
The biotech building, yeah.
Is the one that's already constructed. We're looking at the one that's just next to it.
Yeah, this is, this is.
No, the Norda?
The Norda school. Next week they're having a grand, official grand opening.
Next week.
Table up 400 plus students.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, the one that we're trying to fold in is, is it the housing or is it the?
No, we did the housing before. We're folding the whole campus, but more specifically this building. And that was assessed last, or this past November, 2023, at about 22 million. It's going to come in higher than that because they brought in all kinds of internal stuff that will be assessed over tax holes for 2024 as well. Does that answer your questions? If you could drive out there and see it.
Yeah.
Very desperate need of a parking structure.
Yes, please. I mean, if that's okay.
Yes, please. Oh, did you, sorry. No, no. So folding in this existing building, 22 million, what we're doing is we're now saying, actually, we're going to forego collecting our property tax on this.
Correct.
At that percentage and towards the project. So that's where they're going to make that difference, that funnel, that new money.
Exactly. And frankly, it's like I said, if I had been here, and I'm not, I'm not saying anybody in the city did anything wrong. I, I don't, I just wasn't here as part of the negotiations with you, why we decided to focus only on the residential element to begin with. I don't know that. I think I would have said to you from the very beginning, let's talk about the whole project together and what's going to be built first. Because from a developer's perspective, that's the most important element, right? Which building gets built first that triggers the tax increment flow? So we start to capitalize on that so we can build the next phases. The fact that they were going to begin that building but didn't know when they were going to start the residential and the fact that the market has gotten worse instead of better means we don't know. So in the, in the drafts that we've talked about with the city council, and I can't remember exactly, but I think there's a trigger at five years if the residential hasn't started and 10 years if the residential hasn't been completed, that we could carve back the, the tax increment, say, you're not going to get it. We'll give it back to the school district instead of giving it to the developer. So they're heavily incentivized to follow through and to perform on what they're doing. Otherwise, they don't get any. So from my perspective, there is, there's a short-term risk, the potential revenue that you might have gotten off of this building, you're not going to get. But there's an immediate possibility of return because they're highly incentivized to build the parking structure and the next phases that they're not incentivized at all if we don't participate. If we decide not to participate and they can't figure out a way to fund it, you have to understand, this was all exacerbated by the fact that they spent more than $9 million to excavate an old landfill. And although we can all say they should have known, it's just like your contractor's telling you on, on the building that they're, they're excavating, some of that stuff, you just don't know what's underneath the ground until you get, actually get into it or just how deep the, the hole is. So I think that's one of the difficulties is it was incredibly expensive. It has the potential to return huge value to us, but there's a huge risk that if we say, no, we're going to hold where we are and just keep what we've got, that the developer could say, that's totally fair. We can't finance the next phase, so we're out. And that would be a big risk to all of us.
But why, why couldn't we do an RDA for the new areas without the new building?
Well, we have, but the, but the problem is their ability to finance the next phase is difficult in this market. Because all the developers that we're talking to are saying they're, they're very risk adverse because by the time they put, they, they, just as, just as an example, the redevelopment of the old City Hall site, as we're talking to the potential developers about that, they anticipate they could spend as much as $2 million on architectural work alone, just design. By the time they get all that done and kind of have a final estimate of what a performer looks like and what their construction costs should be, and they bet it out, now builders are, are potentially going to say, contracts are going to say, okay, we'll build it, but I'm not going to guarantee that price because six months from now, it could be different. And you can't finance that. Banks will, banks just look at them and go, yeah, we're not doing that deal because I'm not going to let you get started on a building that you can't finish because your contractors are going to, can't guarantee the prices. And no, no contractors right now are guaranteeing pricing. So that's what we're trying to mitigate and solve for. You're exactly right. We could do what you're doing, what you're talking about. The risk potentially could be that they couldn't finance it and they won't build the next phase.
I, I think it's important, one of the things, it's important to realize that in either case, whether we take the option of adding the building or not adding the building, in either case, the revenues for tax entities, this school district is going up either way. The percentages is to say, if you agree to the interlocal agreement, those percentages, it will go up at that much, but you'll forego some of that to help this project continue on.
For a period of time.
For a period of time. And then afterwards, it goes 100% on the tax holes and we get to capture the images of the site points I just put in front of you. And that's the ultimate goal.
But it's, I, I mean, I'm totally sympathetic and I'm not trying to jack your arm behind your back and force you to do something. I understand that it's an issue. I mean, and we all kind of have to wrestle with our consciences. I just want you to be very clear with yourselves on the potential risk if we don't participate. That there's a, there's an opportunity cost that if we don't participate, this doesn't happen and we potentially lose out on that development. And it's not just the potential property tax we could receive. It's the value to the community and the elevated taxes that we could receive because the types of jobs we're creating, the types of people that are living in our, in our community, all of that. And that's really hard to put a pencil to. Yeah, please.
Okay, so I'm not on the finance committee, so this might be something that I already understand. But if I understood correctly, you said that part of doing this RDA and rolling in the new, or the existing building and all that was also so the agreement would put more requirements on the developer.
Exactly.
And if they don't live up to that, then.
That's exactly right.
So do we have the information as a body of what those requirements?
No, so that's what we're, I mean, we haven't gotten that far with you. We, because I think we're trying to manage through the, these other projects, but now we're to the point where we have the draft of kind of the resolutions that the city councils agreed to conceptually and what those terms would be. So if you're okay with it, then we would come back to you and we would say, based on, based on the budget that we've outlined, the project area that we're talking about, here's the stipulations that we would suggest that you put in your agreement along with what we've put in so that holistically, when you're done, the county's done and the water conservancy district is done, city council memorializes all of them so that we all have the same requirements of the developer.
And I'll have to, I'll have to retrace some of the footsteps I had through the holidays with Derek and Joey, obviously, to get everyone up to speed on, on all that stuff. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
But the only difference about this is because that building is finished, we had anticipated not being able to start the tax increment flow until the residential has done. Which, because it hasn't even started, no one knows when that's going to be. The unique thing about what we're proposing now is because that building is done, we could literally go to the county tomorrow and say, start the clock right, I mean, as soon as this agreement is done, right? We could say the next day, start the clock and the tax increment would immediately begin to flow. And the developer then could go to the financing entities and say, we have a, we have a revenue stream. We can tell you exactly what it's going to be and we, we have a window of how long we're going to have the ability to collect that. Can we finance against that to start the next phase? And they'd be off and running.
It's, it's kind of a reward for their success that they've done to complete the Norda school, which is, for lack of a better word, in HLE called like the anchor tenet. We're doing a medical campus and this is, if without the Norda school, that project doesn't exist. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I don't know. So does that help my?
Yeah, it does. So what do you need from us next? You need a directive to go ahead and draw?
So I think we, we have kind of been waiting, I think, to get to this point right now because we knew that you had had your CPA kind of doing some analysis and, and we, I think we were kind of waiting for this. If you're to the point where you feel comfortable, I think we would start working to develop the agreements that you would then actually put on your board agenda that would disclose what the project area boundary is, the legal descriptions, you would have to go through the, the public notification process. And then you would have to adopt a, a potential agreement that then we would do the same thing with the county, with water conservancy district. And then when all that's done, the city council would memorialize all that and fold them all into one unified agreement that would allow us to go forward.
And we'll, it'll have a cover page with a memo describing all of this in a narrative form. Is that to help, to help refresh your memories?
Can you also refresh our memories too of what the old RDA?
Exactly.
Yes, because that's the other, one of the questions we had in our finance meeting is we were like, well, what's actually included?
Sure.
And what is it?
Absolutely.
There's a lot of confusion on that. So that would be helpful.
We'd be very happy to do that.
So last week I just, I realized that and it came to my, I, you know, just I think a week or two ago, I, I heard about the situation with Derek and stuff. So it will capture and, and formalize all that in a narrative form so you guys can follow that. And then there'll be all the support documents and then a revised interlocal agreement to capture and to accommodate the memo. So you guys can be brought to speed. And Keith and I will be available for any questions or further comments that you guys need or information to that.
So I had two questions. One, maybe for Devon is our RDA policy we created a couple of months ago in 6011, right? It is not on the website, so that needs to be.
I am finding it.
Okay.
So, and then I will get that posted.
Okay.
It wasn't one I had access to, but I am, I am finding it.
Okay. And then, then my next question is, how many RDAs have we approved of total, the school board? And which ones have not started and can we eliminate those to make room for this? Because why would we approve this if we have a whole bunch of RDAs that aren't even going to get started? Or never even going to happen?
So that's, that's a fair question and I, I could have brought a map. I have that information. We can share back with you when we're done, just to be clear.
Yeah, I can with Devon and so the finance committee can talk about that.
Yeah, we, we can share that with you. So there's a difference between adopting a project area and actually starting the tax increment flow on a project versus an RDA that's actually complete. So just as an example, the mall had an agreement that has run its cycle and is done, right? There are, there are RDA project areas in the downtown area that we adopted an, an area and we, and I wasn't here then, but, but we probably had conversations with you about the potential of a project. But because we didn't actually have a development take place, we never came back and showed you a budget and triggered a tax increment flow. So even though the, the boundary kind of was identified and we had conversations, we didn't start those projects. So could we all agree that we want to remove those? Sure, we could. But there's really no implications to you or to me because it, we haven't triggered anything that takes tax increment for, from you yet on those. Does that make sense?
And you couldn't trigger it without us.
Right, exactly. So, so they may be on the books as a potential.
Right.
But we wouldn't be able to trigger it until we came back to you and we said, now a developer has been identified. They have a project that they want to build. Here's what they're proposing to build. Here's what the budget looks like. We all need to agree on that budget. And then if we can agree, then we would start the tax, that we would start, we, we call it the trigger. We would pull the trigger on the tax increment flow with the county and then the clock would begin to tick on the 10 or 15 years or whatever period of time that is. So I understand your question, but there's, there's really no risk to you or to me with protect, with potential areas that we looked at in the city and said, you know what? That's a problem area. Let's, let's look at that and agree with you that we, we think that's blighted. And at some point, if we can find a developer, we may want to work on that together. Just because we've done that doesn't mean that it impacted your taxes that you received or mine. It just means that we all agree that at some point, we may want to do something there if we can find the right partner, right?
But the signed agreements is a different.
Only if we've triggered the tax increment flow with the county, right? So even if we've all signed it, if we haven't, if they haven't actually performed anything or done anything and we haven't gone to the county and said, great. I mean, for example, the mix, we, we, we've all started that, but we didn't actually go to them and say, start the tax flow yet because they hadn't built the product yet. And there, there wasn't any point to start the tax increment flow because if they started it, the land values wouldn't be enough to totally capture enough of the increment that was created. So they've said, don't pull the trigger yet. So you're still getting the same amount of tax increment that you were supposed to all along until we go to the, the county, which will probably maybe this year or next year and say, now we're ready. Go ahead and start the, the tax increment.
And we'll, we identify that and you'll get a, a revised copy of all this.
When that happens.
For this, for this project, Norda.
Sure.
And for the mix, doesn't even start till 2025 that you've agreed to. It will be defined in a plan and then a budget for that plan. And within both those documents that are adopted by the, first the Provo City Council and the agency, and then we go to all the tax entities, yourself, Utah County. It defines, unless they hit a certain benchmark that makes it worth our while, there's, it's never going to be facilitated. And the guy that, the people that control that, that assessment is Utah County Assessor's office. It's not Provo City or the agency. It's, they determine how much value has been created. Once they hit that benchmark or achieve those goals, then that puts them into the stratosphere of the agreements that we're going to ask you to participate in on a certain percentage for a certain length of time.
But, but the mix is a really good example because if you remember, we all agreed with an older developer that we were going to do this. Who, who wasn't, who wasn't able to perform, right? They never put the project together. So even though we had created it, we never had a budget, we never started the clock and so everything kind of stayed the same. Eventually that developer sold to the mix. And so what, what the mix finally came forward and said is, look, you have an old agreement that specified a certain window of time for that clock, but we didn't come in until a couple of years later. We'd like to amend that clock so that it shifts from starting here to starting here so that we capitalize on the full portion. So that's a perfect example of even though it was on the books, you weren't impacted and I wasn't because a project hadn't started yet. Does that help?
Another question.
Yeah, please.
Just wanted to make sure that, one of the questions we had is, since this is on the south end of town, we wanted to make sure that this is being claimed by the Provo City School District.
It is. And that was a question. We've, we've got a map that shows it all is within the school district boundary.
It's in district, or precinct 364, district four. And I, I print off a larger one because I didn't, I can, I even, but this is the larger one so you can see it. And you guys can keep this. I, I didn't print this off. It's just beyond my capability. I didn't get it.
It's pretty fancy.
Yeah. So you could, if you could see that, I don't know, could you guys see that?
Yeah. I'll hold you. Go ahead and point where it's.
We're talking about this area right here. So it's in that, like I said, 364, precinct four. It's right there. And you can have a copy. And electronically I've sent it out so we can aspers it to all of you. And that, that came up with Derek and Joey back around Thanksgiving. I had that discussion with them.
Does that help?
Yeah.
No, it's a good question.
Because there's areas down in that area, like Pacific State, that's not part of the Provo School District. So I just want to make sure.
You're doing everything I do. I have two quick ones. I prefer to verify everything. Because you, we need to define all the stuff so when it goes through. Because you, we need to define all the stuff so when it goes through, it's executed without a hiccup.
Right.
Does that help?
Devin or Jared, do you have any other questions that you don't have?
Okay. Well, it's always a pleasure to come talk to you guys, so thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate it very much, and we appreciate our partnership with you. I mean, I hope you know, I don't know what your relationship was like in the past, but I mean, we really do feel like you guys are partners with us, and that these issues are ones that are common to you and they're common to us, and we're both just trying to accomplish the same things, so that you have the ability to run incredible schools and we have the ability to run an incredible city, so.
And help this school get off the ground.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item G, our secondary attendance adjustments.
Chad, it's Provo High, it's all the people, all right.
So at the start of the school year, we implemented a new policy at Provo High to match kind of what TPU was doing. We really felt like both high schools should be kind of.
Can you say what your name is?
Oh, sorry. I'm Paula Hina, the dean of students at Provo High. Okay. So we implemented a school, um, attendance policy at Provo High to match kind of what TPU was doing. We felt like both high schools needed to be on the same page. We have a lot of students that, not a lot, but quite a few, that go to TPU and Provo High, do one day with us, one day up at TPU. So they are on a point system, we did minutes. I also know that we are a little bit more lenient than what the TPU policy is. It's been going well. The teachers have liked it, the PTA has liked it as well. I feel like we're helping students, I mean, our motivation is good attendance. We're not out to get anyone. We just want good attendance and create good habits in our students for the future. It's helped us with kids that are very involved in our activities, in our extracurriculars. We're not currently reaching other students that aren't, that are involved. We have some plans on rewarding good attendance, improved attendance that are coming up, and we're gonna try them out this rest of the school year to see how that goes with us. The other thing we have at Provo High is we're the pilot school for the FOPS. We have currently twenty teachers.
There's twenty teachers.
That use the FOPS, the whole English department, and a few other teachers that have jumped on board with the FOPS. Teachers like it because it's the student's responsibility. They are responsible for their attendance. The issues we've had is losing the FOPS or stealing the FOPS. Students that will give the FOP to another, to a friend who goes and FOPS in for them. Students that fall in and then they leave. So a lot of teachers have moved their equipment to the back of the room or the side of the room so that the students actually have to go all the way in. We feel that if we had the whole school on board, then one student wouldn't give the FOP to another student, right? Because they needed the very next period. A lot of students have just used the FOPS as an excuse with the parents, and so parents will come and say, well, is this FOP system that isn't working? And then we explain to them, no, 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 the FOP system is only for this class and for this class. So if your student is telling him some, telling you something else, it's not the truth. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Any questions? I actually have a question about my student, an excuse they gave me. I wanna know if it's real. My, my, my son gets frustrated because he says, there's like time limits, right, on the FOP, and if you, you know, click in after, or scan in after a certain time, it's automatically a fifteen-minute late tardy, even if you're only like three minutes late, something to that effect. Is that right?
It's true, yes.
That's true.
So when they're tardy, they get fifteen minutes. That's true. So we cannot set up a system that does just one single minute, right?
Right.
On the other hand, our students have four hundred and eighty-minute buffer. So if they're late fifteen minutes, I mean, there's a lot of fifteen minutes that can, they can be late until they reach the four hundred and eighty minutes before they get penalized, or, you know, before they get into the no participation list.
This was a huge concern for the student board member there, our student advisory council. This came up, and they were very concerned about this because if they're one minute late to a few classes and they have other things happening, that then limits their participation in dances and things like that. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
But like I said, they have four hundred and eighty minutes buffer, or four hundred and seventy-nine. It doesn't come until they're at the four hundred and eighty. And if you're one minute late, that's what I tell them. If you're one minute late, you can make it on time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there were also issues, I think they were saying, there's a line to get in. No line?
No, and in fact, Kami, when we talked to her about it, and Pollak could say the same thing, there, there is no line. It's really quick. I mean, they, they just walk up with the FOP and just hit the scanner. It's quick. I mean, there, there hasn't been any lines that we know of, and maybe nobody wants to say that.
Well, it's just, with, with those meetings, what people have been saying is that it takes like five seconds or something for the FOP, for the FOP to turn on, right? And then you have to wait, and then someone else has to come in. So if that, if there is a line at left or like, like a minute before, that could take a bit of time. I don't know, I haven't used the FOP system, but that's what I was hearing from others.
Yeah, it, it can generally be pretty quick if you, if you want it to be. Like you really just hold it over and you hear a beep, and then you're good. So as long as people are doing that, it shouldn't, there shouldn't really be a line. So I honestly didn't really know what they were talking about, about that, but, yeah.
If they all showed up a minute before class started, you probably have that issue.
Yeah, that's true.
But they won't show up.
But could a teacher override, like say, like, okay, those kids have been in the line through the whole first minute, and it's about to trigger a fifteen-point tardy, can they override it and just say, they were here?
Yep, the teacher can go in.
Okay. Um, one of the concerns we had about moving to this system is, will teachers notice when they have students who are perpetually absent to be able to then have outreach? So do you notice a difference in the way that teachers are addressing attendance issues and noticing who's in their classroom and who's not?
They do notice because actually you get a report right away of your attendance.
Okay.
So, like, to your email. So the teachers that use the FOP, they get a report to their email every class period.
So then they can check up on it?
They can check up on it.
Any other questions about the attendance update? Have you, can, have you seen, do you have any like numbers as attendance increased as a result of this new system and kids and the points and all that?
Are you, um, so we are currently comparing term one and term two, and we're comparing it by grade level, demographics, male, female, like, we're doing a bunch of comparisons right now to have like more exact data.
Love to see that when, when you have that, that data.
What's the plan with the pilot? Like, are we staying with these twenty classrooms all school year and then what after that?
We're, we're really not sure. That's quite part of the problem is our, our vendor just invoiced us recently for it. It's four dollars a student right now is about what it costs to do it. The other thing that comes along with that system, like, Jeanie, correct me if I'm wrong, but one thing they've been working on with the system, if we were to purchase it every year, and that's a yearly cost, by the way, is there's an avenue for a parent to go in and excuse an absence from their phone. So that's become something that is a possibility, yeah. So that would come with this system. That's, that's one thing. There are other possibilities too. Right now, it's, it's a key FOP, and you know somewhere, you have a Provo High green, you know.
We have TPU blue too.
Yeah, TPU blue, they, they do get all blue colors over there. But honestly, I thought the system would fail. I mean, that was, that was my initial thought process, is I'm like, there's no way this is gonna work. They quickly proved us wrong. I mean, the teachers love it, and a lot of what they love it for too is tardies. Because now they're not having to argue about tardies, they can just, you know, when they come in, they're tardy, they're tardy. Teachers don't have to like fill out a slip and say, oh, I gotta go back into the system and put Johnny in. There's been a lot of positives with that. You can go beyond the FOP and do the phone, which is a lot more expensive, but that is an option you could do as the reader, the phone near field can connect to it. You're a lot less likely to give your friend your phone or FOP.
There's no good.
So there's some of those things. But we feel like a lot of the problems will go away when everybody has a FOP and we're doing it every class period. So that's kind of where we're at.
You had mentioned in the student meeting that we may have to go to one of yours. Where is that, that happening?
Yeah, so in the school safety bill, they talked about all high school students having to wear an ID badge, and we could create a, a code, a barcode scanner, and so we could go that route.
Yeah, we could do that.
And do that, and so students would, we would just have that as an expectation.
I asked Phil Cox, he said that is not in the bill?
Well.
Is it?
I think it wa, I think it was in the original, I think that was in the original bill, so I don't know. But that could still be an expectation that we decided to have so that you can identify easily if students are supposed to be in the building or not, and then you use that for all sorts of things, to scan it, and then you don't have the equity issue of some students who have a phone and some who do not. Everybody would just have. Is that a comparable price as the FOP to have it on?
The current FOP, or the reader for these, is twenty dollars. The reader for the phones is two hundred.
But for, if we were to do it on an ID badge, is it the same as the FOP?
It depends, because, because you could do the ID badge to, to do the more expensive reader or the cheaper one. So it depends on which way you go. If you wanna go the phones, you have to go the, the more expensive route than the reader. But if you're just gonna do a FOP or, or just a card reader, it's the same, it's a twenty dollars. And we're using old Chromebooks for this, so it's not like there's a huge expense on that side. So they just put the Chromebook in the back of the room wherever the teacher feels like they need it. It's, it's actually worked really well.
I think the thing that Principal Alvarez talked about when we met with her was, there's a, it definitely saves time for the teacher. Like, this is a, this is, this is very helpful to the teacher to have this as a way to track attendance and keep more accurate records and whatnot. It probably, it is not going to be the solution that's gonna start getting kids who are chronically absent to start going to school. It is going to get the kids, like you said, for tardies, you know, Paula, like, you know, a kid who might be tardy. I'm not going to be because, but that's also because I have this fifteen points, right, that are tied to it. So it's because it's also attaching to an attendance policy. So I think we just have to be clear about what is the purpose of this system, and is that helpful to teachers to save in their instructional time and record keeping, and is that a worthy cost, so?
A kind of frequent conversation I have with parents is when, you know, they come and leave with me because their students have an attendance problem, and then eight days, the student is tardy all the time, B days, on time. So the parent does like, the difference is, one is the FOP system, the other one is the teacher taking attendance. And so we have those inconsistencies right now.
Interesting.
So.
Are there any further questions? Thank you so much. All right, in the interest of time, we are going to move items H through L to our business meeting. We'll discuss that, um, let's see, after the public input section. And so go ahead and move on to our motion to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I'm willing to adjourn.
Okay, we're adjourned, and will reconvene in our business meeting in the PDC? Let's see, it's supposed to be at six-ten. We're gonna take a little bit more time. Let's try to reconvene by like six-seventeen. How about that, nine minutes and a half?
Seventeen.
How about sixteen?
Sixteen.
You can scan in with your FOP. Scan in with your FOP, and if you're late, smoke now.